Seventeen to twenty truckloads that are estimated for the total project. So, there will be eleven trucks of modules, um, and th- those will come on semi trucks, so they're seventy-five thousand pu- pounds each. Uh, one semi truck of inverters, which is forty thousand pounds each. Um, the, uh, one truck of switchboards, which is forty thousand pounds each, those will come on a flatbed or box truck. One truck of transformers, which is approximately fifty thousand pounds each, that will come on a flatbed truck. And then three to six trucks of racking, which are approximately forty to seventy-five thousand pounds each, and this is comes on a flatbed. And so it'll be up to four module trucks a day for most contractors. It shouldn't be delivering modules for any longer than a week. Racking should only last one to two days for delivery. Inverters usually same day as one of the other above deliveries. Switchboards and transformers usually scheduled separately as they will recor- or deliver, delivery separate. Delivery will be separate as they require more attention and will acquire a crane lift and be set on the equipment panels the same day. So, it's all sequenced, but ten to fifteen actual delivery days over the course of two to three months is a conservative estimate. And that's coming from our construction team, um, our pre-construction team that does all the estimating. I talked about that already. Oh, recycling. So, recycling, there have been advancements in recycling and refurbishing models in recent years. Not many solar, solar facilities have been decommissioned as they're running strongly. We submitted a decon plan for approval, which we talked about, um, which includes restoring the property to the pre-existing condition and removing all solar components and fencing. Um, and like you saw in the pictures, like those are, are real projects, um, like it's, you will see the vegetative seed below. It's not like we're paving anything below. Um, it's, it's just the panels have to get uplifted, so we try to have the, the impact be as minimal as possible. And it's not like the panels are just like flat all day, they move. So, the, the ground actually does get sun exposure, um, throughout the day, um, so it's never a hundred percent blocked by the sun. Um, are there any other questions I didn't answer that are still outstanding for people?
I had, I'm still a little confused. I, I don't know much about, you said decibels of noise?
Yes.
I mean, is that like a corridor slamming and a grain dryer fan, or is it a?
It's more of a hum.
Or what, what is, I don't know how much that is.
So, I have been on our operating sites and I don't hear anything, but I think if you are like really looking for it, it would be a small hum. But with your, like, like, it's in the middle. The only, like, components of our, oh, stop saying that. The only components of our product. The only components of our product that make any noise are the inverters. And they are three hundred and twenty, or three hundred and ninety-seven feet from the closest abutter here. And then, um, I'd actually don't know the measurement from your house, but I'll, I'll get that measurement and I can send it to Jim who can give it to you. Yeah, the inverter, I, I called it out on the.
So, what was the decibel level of the inverter?
The, it's, uh, thirty, thirty-five point eight decibels in daylight. And it's only when the sun is out, so there would be no noise at night.
So, just as a reference, I was just looking it up online. A normal conversation between two people is sixty to seventy decibels. A whisper is thirty decibels, someone yelling is eighty decibels, and a lawnmower is eighty to a hundred decibels.
Yeah, so it's like a whisper.
So, what you're describing is a little bit louder than a whisper.
Yeah.
At hundreds of feet away.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
Okay.
So hopefully that, um, I don't think you'll hear a whisper from your shed or your house, Wayne.
Okay, I don't know if you know, but wh- um, what is a, like a membership fee or how does? Do, do you go through Ameren or do people call you, or how's that work?
Um, it goes both ways. So, sometimes we work with a third party or we get like a list of people that are interested. Uh, we have a whole subscriber team as part of our asset management team. So, I can get more information and pass it on to Jim as well, um. I just unfortunately am not on that team, so I don't know, um, the nitty gritty details of how everyone signs up. I haven't gotten that question before, sorry.
That's fine, and this question is probably not so much for you, and I don't want to throw Jim under the bus or anything. I'm just gonna ask. Adams County voted down zoning three, years ago. Um, how, are we just following the state as far as a zoning or a, uh, like building permits? We don't have zoning, so how can we issue a building permit? And who's going to enforce it? Like I say, I don't want to throw you under the bus, but just a question.
No, you're fine. Um, the statute specifically al- calls out and allows counties without zoning to enact this, an ordinance for both solar and wind. So, we are allowed to do that by statute. It's written in there, so we can do it without the zoning. And what was your next question? I'm sorry.
The building permits?
And through the process of the statute, the application process is first, yes, according to the statute, the county is allowed to issue a building permit specifically for the solar farm or specifically for a wind farm. And then that's where your conditional statements and everything else can be tied in through the ordinance and the granting of the permit.
So, we're allowed to create an ordinance, but we can't be more restrictive than the state though, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Let's assume for a moment that we had countywide zoning. Um, and it was more restrictive, and this just applies to counties, not municipalities, but I'll just read a section of the, the statute. A county with existing zoning ordinance in conflict with this section shall amend that zoning ordinance to be in compliance with this section. So, assume that the county had zoning, you'd have to amend the zoning ordinance.
Because it can't be more restrictive than the state statute, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Somewhat like a hug form?
It's, yeah, and and, and on that, just to answer a couple of other questions, there's been reference made to property values. The statute says a county may not condition approval of a commercial wind energy facility or a commercial solar energy facility on a property value guarantee and may not require a facility owner to pay into a neighboring property devaluation escrow account. So, it kind of, the statute's kind of taken that into account. So, a- a- at this point, it's the siding process. And then while I'm on a roll to answer some of the questions for Mr. Finley, the ordinance does provide, going back and forth, that after this is, if it's, the siding is granted and the building permits are issued and the construction occurs and it's operational, the ordinance and statutes allow the county to go into the premises to inspect and make sure it's continued compliance. Now, that doesn't answer who's gonna do it, but as far as the authority, you have that.
Yeah, I forgot to touch on that, all the surety bond decon questions, um. So typically, at other counties that we've worked within across the country, but in Illinois, we submit with, like we did with a special use permit or decommissioning plan, and that either gets approved with a special use permit, or we do a, um, a decommissioning plan agreement, um, which I've talked to Barney about too. Um, we're cool with whatever you guys want to do, um, but basically it makes sure that we're all in agreement that when SRE, um, like the terms of our lease, or like, if you guys are worried about us going bankrupt or something, that when we exit, that you would have money, um, regardless, so that the property, all the panels will be gone, all the equipment will be removed and the property will be restored to the pre-existing condition, which is agriculture. So, it's really not, it's not a permanent use. I know it's a long time and it might be a permanent use for some people based on like what age you are, but it's not a permanent use. And it won't be a solar panel graveyard.
Okay, I got another question. This might be for Ryan. Uh, we get, we collect taxes somehow from the solar farm.
Yep.
From you guys.
Yep.
Once a year?
Um.
How's that work?
I think they're usually quarterly.
Okay.
We get taxes. I don't know wh- how it works in Adams County.
Two times a year, okay.
I think it's gonna be your real estate tax bill.
Yeah, typically they're.
So, does real estate also get taxed from the homeowner?
So.
The property owner?
Maybe. Can, it, it, stop me if I'm getting ahead of you. I think what would happen is that if the site is approved, there's an option for a lease in the application. I would imagine that the option has not been exercised and if there's an approval made and there's a building permit, then the lease is gonna be entered for twenty-five years. That's my guess. I don't know what's gonna happen.
Yep.
During that process, Georgine Zimmerman says, "You have to give me a legal descriptions." And then what she, and she would, her preference would be that whoever the, whether it's Summit Ridge Energy or the subsidiary.
We already have it, yeah.
Um, that it'd be either, it'd be assessed in their name, the tax bill would be sent to them. If they don't pay the tax bill, the, the McNays lose their ground.
Thank you.
Like a sale and air.
Just like, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I had a question.
Taxes are significantly higher. I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Very sorry.
Oh, let me just finish, then you can go, because, um, so we can tie out that thought. The tax rate is significantly higher for, um, non-agriculture. So, the, the county would be receiving much higher tax base from the agric- than the existing use. Sorry, go ahead, sorry.
I just, uh, I'm, I'm kinda here tonight in a dual capacity, so I received a letter from Mr. Frankenhoff, um, as representative for J M Huber Corporation as an ad- adjacent or adjacent property to this property. And the only question I really have, uh, first of all, reading through this has taught me a lot about solar power that I didn't know, or solar panels, solar farms that I didn't know about, but, uh, I've heard you talk about batteries and chemicals, and we've talked about the panels themselves. Um, is there, you know, uh, my company's very much focused on sustainability and the environment and so is there anything we're missing there and is, you know, who, is that regulated as far as runoff water and things like that as it relates to this project?
So, we do have to submit a stormwater plan, um, so that will, there, we have oversight there.
That, that answered my question, but I just hadn't really heard that yet, so that's why I wanted to ask.
Don't yet, so I'm, sorry, it wasn't in my notes, so, yeah, please speak up if you have more questions. I definitely want this to be back and forth. Um, so, yeah, so our EPC, which is our Engineer Procurement Construction, it's an acronym, they have to submit the stormwater plan. But just generally speaking, like, all the, the chemicals and components are like captured, so they kind of like, think of like plastic, they're all inside. So, water running down, it's just a kind of like, if you have like plastic water bottle, it just kind of runs off, so there's no, um, there's no additional stormwater that comes off of, um, the, the panels. It just all goes right to the ground, so it's kind of, it's watering those pollinator friendly seed that we have. Um, and so that's why we do the vegetative cutting, because we don't want it to look bad. Um, so we, we make sure that we maintain that, um, yeah.
And, and I assume you submit, you're submitting your stormwater plan through the I E P A and?
Yep, exactly, yeah.
Getting approval through that, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
But that won't happen, like I said, until we get approved. We have, um, construction level drawings, um, and so just, we hadn't really touched on that timeline, but just so you all know, um, I talked about the six to nine months of construction, but we are hoping, um, that we get approved, obviously. And then our construction level drawings, um, would be ready about six, um, about mid-August. So, we would hope to start construction in September of this year with our permission to operate from Ameren in May of next year with our substantial completion, which like means like the subscribers are a hundred percent able to get all of their energy through this community solar in June of twenty-five.
If, if approved, do you, um, is it, if you, if you're, if approved and you're up and running, is there expansion in the plans? I don't know if you hit that.
So, we are, honestly, we originally had submitted for a four point nine-nine megawatt project, which is more than double what this project is. This is a two point one-two-five megawatt, so it's a lot bigger acreage. Um, but Ameren's, uh, substation did not have ability, uh, to hold all of, um, the energy that we were going to produce without us doing a substation upgrade, which is like big money. Um, and even this project is, um, well over a million dollars upgrades that we have to do. Um, so we have, I talked on the interconnection, but so we have a, they gave us like the whole number, but it's not the, the, like, um, we don't have the dollar and cents, like we're like, oh, this is at one point, blah. Um, so that number is what we're waiting on, six eighteen, once we accept that number, they sent us an interconnection agreement. But, yeah, it's, uh, we, Ameren decides. And so we, we would never come forward if we didn't have some discussion with Ameren, so that's why that supplemental review is so important to make sure like, we're not wasting your time. This project is real for Ameren, it's viable.
Do you have your own construction crew that travels around?
We don't, so we actually, um, we work with, um, different companies typically that are in Illinois, um, because we have such a big hub here. Um, so, yeah, the engineer procurement, we do bids to a bunch of different EPCs and then whatever number is best. But we have worked with a bunch, so we have like our top group of companies that we like to get bids from.
Are they, not that it matters, are they prevailing wage or union by chance?
Um, it, in certain counties they are, um, in Cook County, which is in Chicago, it is, um, but not typically, um, in, outside of Cook County in Illinois.
Thank you.
And then we also, um, have in-house operating team, which is like a project management team that oversees the EPC. And so we, they're out on site. We have construction managers, um, that, you know, I would say every week and a half are on site, um, looking at all of the, the projects that are going on. But they have calls daily about all the projects, like what's the update, what have you done, are you on schedule? Um, because time is money.
And as far as the road, um, damages or concerns, do we have, is that an eighty thousand pound road, or do you know off the top of your head, or do we, would that be township's problem?
Well, first to answer your question with regards to the eighty thousand pounds, um, the governor of the state of Illinois more or less declared that all roads in Adams, very, in the state of Illinois are eighty thousand pound roadways. The design and capability of that roadway, I mean, they're allowed. So, the extent of the road use agreement obviously is to ensure that they don't do anything above and beyond normal wear and tear and replace as is, and that will be worked out either with Wayne or with the road commissioner.
Would that be during the building permit process?
That is the intent of the building permit is to have that completed and in place.
Yep.
So that everybody knows where everybody's at with it.
So, we have the, the drafted version for right now. We're just working through it and I've been talking back and forth with Jim about like, this is where we are, this is information that we need. So, one of the, the numbers or missing components right now is the surety bound amount, is how much money do you want for the, the bond? So, insurance, other fun stuff.
I noticed Ms. McNay is here. I didn't know if she wanted to address the committee. Don't have to.
That's how, that's how it works for me. Thanks so much, Linda, for speaking. I just had to, um, it's like EverSource and National Grid where I live in Massachusetts, and I just had to log into the portal and said I wanted to use this third-party provider. And you, you can see the, the cost savings, um, right there. And just to speak to, um, that the McNays, um, it's a hundred and, um, sixty-two feet from their house. So, they're also are close to the project and don't have concerns, um, so I just wanted to share that too. Yeah, yep, and that's from the fence line, so it's plus sixteen. Thanks for sharing.
Anybody have, oh?
Yeah, so I, I don't know if you would be able to tap into the community solar Ameren, because this, this is tied in with Ameren, but I'm not sure. Maybe if you reached out. Yeah. I can't, I'm not familiar, I'm sorry. But do you have a question or first behind?
Could you please identify, state your name, please?
Yeah, I can definitely give a list to Jim for sure. I don't have the list of all the, the twenty-three counties, um, and, yeah, we have, there was, is it? Twenty-three counties and forty other products that are under construction in different parts of the country too. I don't have the list off the top of my head. But some of those counties I talked about are ones that either I have specifically worked in or my colleagues are working in right now. Uh, you could reach out to Jim. Who's the, the county, um, engineer? I'm just saying that I will, I can give that list to Jim and then people can reach out to Jim.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Do you know, happen to know the brand of the panels that you'll install and where they're manufactured at?
I do, yeah. It's Q cells and, um, I just have, I have more information, I just wanted to pull it up. All right, so where is the equipment manufactured? So, the modules be procured by Hanwa Q cells. Um, they're five ninety watt solar panels for this project. Um, Hanwa Q cells is a company headquartered in South Korea with engineering roots in Germany with manufacturing facilities located here in the U.S. in Georgia. In April of, um, twenty twenty-three, Summit Ridge announced the largest solar panel procurement of one point two gigawatts of panels from Hanwa Q cells, whereby the majority of the solar panels from this purchase will be manufactured in Hanwa Q cells, the U.S.-based manufacturing facility in Dalton, Georgia. So, they're assembled in Georgia, but not manufactured there, and the parks offshore parts of it, um, come from South Korea. And then, like, Siemens is a German-based company. Uh, their transformers are WEG, which are assembled in Missouri with offshore parts. The switchboards, um, are assembled in Jersey City, New Jersey. Uh, the steel is structural steel, U.S.-manufactured. The torque tubes would be, um, most likely coming from Mexico and the U.S., um, it's U.S.-manufactured and includes some recycled parts. So hopefully that answers that.
Anybody else have any questions for Ms. Cronin? Anybody else want to make any statements or ask any more questions? I think that concludes that portion.
Thank you very much.
Now, you want to talk about what you want to do next?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, do we take action tonight?
This is, you have options of what you can do. You can take a vote tonight on whether to give, I would say, preliminary approval to the siding process and subject to the conditions on the last page, which I'll get into in a moment, if I may, and then direct the staff to draft findings of fact consistent with what's presented. And if you want me to, I can, I can make up a more formal motion than that.
Can we actually take a vote? Because on the, on the agenda doesn't say anything about any action items or taking a vote, so.
I think you can give what I'll refer to as preliminary approval, so you have an idea what you want to do at the, unless, unless, it's not gonna be a final action, that's why I said preliminary. Because you're gonna, I imagine that you're gonna want to have a document in front of you that you can take a look at with the proposed ordinance probably the second Tuesday of June. But the reason I said preliminary, there's obviously has to be some work done, if, if you're leaning that way, there has to be some work done between now and then. If you just want to discuss it the second Tuesday of June, you can do it then.
And then when would the county full board?
June, June, was it June twelfth?
Eleven. Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I've, I don't know if I can make a motion to concur with what Barney just said.
How about this? You can't do it. That's right, no, but you, you're, you're the chair of the committee. But hopefully, if somebody can make a motion to grant preliminary approval of the siding application submitted by Summit Ridge Energy and direct county staff to draft findings of fact consistent with the evidence submitted and draft a proposed ordinance for the committee's consideration at its next meeting on June.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, a little bit of discussion before then, okay, before you vote. You'll look in the back, there's all kinds of conditions on the back. Um, and we talked about them as far as, there, there's eleven, there's ten listed. Um, if, if the county approves the siding permit, there's, they still have to go through the building permit. Before the building permit is issued, there's gonna have to be a road use agreement between and among the county and the, um, road district and the applicant. Prior to the commencement of the construction, they're gonna have to enter into a decommissioning agreement with the county, and that's what I wanted to point that out, because there's been a little bit of talk about that. I'm not sure what that consists of. As I indicated before, that this by and large was gathered from what other counties have done and other counties have passed ordinances and conditions that there will be a conditioning agreement. So, I went out and I looked for a decommissioning agreement. None has been drafted as of yet, okay, just so you know. But I imagine that the decommissioning agreement will probably be along the lines of compliance with the State of Illinois Agricultural Medigation Agreement and, uh, the funding through bonds. I, I don't think that the county's gonna be able to say, "This is the manner in which you will take down the panels." Um, during all phases of operation, applicant is not permitted to include battery storage or energy storage at the site. Um, reasonable construction hours, comply with all recommendations of the Department of Natural Resources. The siding approval is limited to the duration of, um, a certain amount of years. We'll have to talk about that, we'll present that. And it has vegetation that will be in the agreement and that the annual inspections and the one that Georgine Zimmerman just was adamant about, there has to be a legal description of the actual solar project site. So, that would be included in the motion.
Barney, I had one question on that. For number eight, could you just clarify, and you can do it in the next meeting too, but the, the date of commercial operation, what does commercial operation mean to the county?
Okay, on eight?
Yep, eight.
You know, the answer is, I don't know if commercial operation is the, that you only have so much time to build it, you have to have.
So, commercial operation for some people means when we start construction and sometimes for different people, it means when Ameren has given a substantial completion. Or Ameren, and another option is Ameren gives you permission to operate. So, we really just need to understand what the county mean, like what is your definition of commercial operation? Because the number of years that we would want for that is just, it changes based on the. Cause the number of years that we would want for that is just, it changes based on the definition.
Like I said, we'll have to address that later, and that's gonna be part of the building permit process.
The, the only other thing I want to add is that we could debate the merits of fossil fuels, renewables all day long. Um, I have thirty-two panels on my house here in town. The only reason I did it was to save on my electric bill. Um, I don't think wind is the answer. I don't think solar is the answer. This is just all personal opinion. Um, but, uh, we have to abide by state law, we have to abide by state statute. Um, and we have to be fair to the property owners of the property itself and the, the business that wants to do business there. Um, as represented, we have to represent them as well as the residents in the area within the laws that are written in the state. So for me, all that's under consideration. Um, but everyone has to be represented on both sides. I just wanted to add that.
If you don't object, I think Mr. Frankenhoff wanted to make a statement.
Um, if I could, with regards to the finding of facts and recommendations that was provided, um, you keep referring to ten conditions. If you read across the top, these are possible conditions for consideration and comment. Um, those were taken one, from one, Vermillion County approval. Um, we did find that we're, there was another one available, again, we're writing on Vermillion County for a lot of this. There's another permit that they issued has twenty-eight conditions attached to it. So we're not limited to these conditions specifically in the ten, those are basis, just to start a discussion. I mean, you know, we can review the other ones, we can provide those as options. Um, some of them are redundant with the permit itself. Like I said, again, they were just put, put forth as an example. And they can certainly be reviewed by staff and forwarded to you as necessary.
So I guess our committee will leave it up to Jim and Barney to get the conditions ready?
For your consideration at the June eleventh meeting.
Yes, transportation buildings and grounds, yes. Then we would put our suggestion, or forward our suggestion to the big board later on that same night.
So, is there a, is there a motion on the floor right now?
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, hang on a second, okay.
So I guess it's, I may be out of line, but unless there's more discussion, maybe it's time for a vote. All those on the committee in favor, say aye. Okay.
Are, can we legally vote? I mean, it doesn't say anything on the agenda about voting or an action.
This is not a final action.
It's preliminary.
That's, that's, that's fine.
Uh, okay, I'm just, just want clarification.
Otherwise, and the reason I say that is that if you don't give some preliminary action, we're not getting direction as far as making a presentation.
I, I understand. We've just had some open meeting act issues before, and I'm trying to avoid any of that. And I don't have any, um, I don't know where a legal representation is at the moment.
Well, if, if something goes bad, you're looking at the guy you can point the finger at.
I'm not, I'm not an expert on, on how that works, that's why I rely on the wordy people like you, so.
Aye.
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 Motion to give preliminary approval passes, subject to further consideration at the June eleventh meeting.
And if that was illegal, I'd take it all back.
Okay. I think we're adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, say.